Everyone, welcome to the Judiciary Committee hearing. My name is Carl Rhodes. I'm Chair of the committee. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the following agenda, our JDC 9:30 AM agenda, and that's it. The other members of the committee are Vice Chair Kail Kaloli, Senators Casio, Gabbard, Lee, Kim, and Favella. As noted, this hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all hearings and meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. If you're interested in seeing the written testimony, you can go to the Legislature's website, capital.hawaii.gov, capital with an O. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to a major technical problem, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 8 at 9:26 AM, and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. For everyone who's testifying, who signed up to testify in person remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to go. There's a two-minute time limit on testifiers, but many times, members will have questions for you, so if you can hang around, that would be great. If there are temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on, but we'll try to come back to you if we can fix it quickly. And I believe that's all the preliminaries. Let's get started. First up today is SB 3182. This would create a wealth asset tax, establish a wealth asset tax on 1% of all assets of a taxpayer, except for interest in real property, in excess of $20 million for taxpayers filing jointly and $10 million for others. First up on 3182 is Director Troy from the Department of Taxation.
Yes, Chair. Good morning. This is Jonathan White on behalf of the Director of Taxation. And we provided some comments on the bill, and we'll stand on those written comments. Thank you.
Great. Next is Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Hi, good morning. This is Jade McMillan, as I say, on behalf of Tom and the Tax Foundation. We've offered comments on the measure. Please feel free to contact our office if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom Bickel, Americans for Democratic Action and Support, Neil Okabayashi for Hawaii Bankers Association, in opposition. Lynn Matusau in opposition, Joe Kent for Grassroots Institute of Hawaii with comments. That's all the testimony we have on 3182. Members, any questions? Senator Kim, go ahead.
Good morning. Tax Department, I know you brought up comments and you're standing on it, but I think some of it is worth going over, so if you could just note the issues that you feel we need to look at on this measure.
Sure. Our comments mostly go toward the fact that this will be a brand-new tax type. So I think it's, or we think it's kind of a heavy lift as far as the policy. A couple of specifics that we pointed out, the definition of taxpayer, I think that's a little bit easier one, but something that needs to be developed. More difficult things is devaluation. That's a contentious point with the estate tax. And then the thing right now closest to a wealth tax, I guess, is the estate tax. So it's likely to be an issue with this as well. This one has a real property carve-out. I think I understand the, you know, the point of that, but if it's to tax wealth in excess of these thresholds here, 20 million to 10 million, I'm not, we're not sure why the, you know, all real estate would be carved out of that. Those are the kind of questions we think that are part of that, like I called it a heavy lift as far as developing, you know, the details of the, of a wealth tax, something like this. We do point out in our testimony that, I think it's SB 3250, proposes to create a wealth tax working group, I think it's called. Something like that might be appropriate for, for something like to develop all the details for something like this. But either way, I think our testimony goes toward it's, you know, being a work in progress for sure as far as the, you know, the details of, you know, an entire new tax type.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Gabbard. Do you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Also for Jonathan, what would be the estimated revenue if this were to pass unamended?
We don't have one right now. I think that the, the Office of Justice for us is working on, you know, some of the other ones. I don't think they've gotten to it yet. I think it'll be included maybe in our testimony at a later hearing, I guess, if it goes forward, but I don't have one right now.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. White, I do have a question for you, too. So the carve-out for the real property tax, I mean, the Constitution gives the counties the right to, to tax, to charge a real property tax. Have you guys looked at? I mean, I'm not, it's not, it's not clear to me that that's an exclusive right to them, or I guess, I guess the real question is to do that, if you wanted to include real property tax and an overall, overall wealth tax, do you guys believe that a constitutional amendment would be necessary?
Um, that's a good question. I didn't think of that when I was drafting this testimony. That's a very good point. I haven't done that specific research, but I think that the way it's drafted, or the way the Constitution is written right now, I think the best argument is that it is pretty close to an exclusive right for the counties. So I think that's a, that's a good point, and that's a good issue about a wealth tax. Again, it's like, you know, what is real property, as we point out in our testimony? But of course, it could be defined to exclude whatever is within that exclusive, you know, jurisdiction of the counties, you know what I mean? So it could be, if that's the case, it could be, if that's the case, and that's the reason behind that exemption and the bill as drafted, that could be worked into the definition. But yeah, that's a good point about the county real property constitutional authority.
Okay, members, any other questions?
I do have one more for Jonathan. So Jonathan, the Hawaii Bankers Association do mention in their testimony about 401Ks, and they do say that while the threshold might not be reached just on, on your 401K, but if your spouses die and you take into consideration the worldwide assets that it could, so do you folks see that that way as well?
Um, I haven't been able to read any other testimony yet, but what I think you're saying is that basically the, if a spouse passes away, those assets will become the asset. Yeah. So if that, that would get combined and could, you know, push somebody over the threshold. I think so. I think that the way it's drafted now, it's kind of, I think there's a 20, yeah, joint filer 20 and a single filer for 10. So I think if they already had, it's already kind of double the single, so I don't see, that didn't stand out to me because I guess if you, if the spouse that dies was going to go into the other one and push them over the threshold, they would already be above the, the double.
Couple it with other assets, right?
I'm sorry.
Well, you couple it with other assets.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess they would become, yeah, they would become single, I guess, because they wouldn't be joint filers anymore after that first year. So yeah, a person like that, that would, that would happen. And that's why, I mean, I think that, you know, the tax, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying that it needs to be looked at more closely because there's questions. Thank you very much, Jonathan.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? All right. I think that's good for me, too. Thank you, Mr. White, and I'll do it just for being here, Ms. McMillan. Let's go and move on to the next bill, which is SB 3250. This establishes an income tax for high-income individuals, estates, and trusts, and establishes a working group within the Department of Taxation to develop a proposal for a state wealth tax. First up on 3250 is Director Troy, or as designated.
Jonathan White on behalf of the Director, again. We provided comments on this one. Similar to the last one, pointing out a couple of technical things and then describing how an income tax surcharge essentially can be done within the current structure with the marginal rates, you know, just adjust the marginal rates. And there can be a, you know, you can define those additional marginal rates to kind of get to the same effect as this. And then there was a technical thing about the penalty, the definition of the penalties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all the oral testimony we have on 3250. Other testifiers include John Bickel, Americans for Democratic Action and Support, Neil Okabayashi, Hawaii Bankers Association, opposition, Joe Kent for Grassroots Institute of Hawaii with comments, Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. I don't show Tax Foundation is having signed up for oral testimony here, but if you'd like to testify, Ms. McMillan, you are here still, it's like.
Yes, thank you. We have offered comments on the measure, and again, you may contact our office if you have.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the testimony we have on SB 3250. Members' questions on this one? Senator Kim.
So Jonathan, again, so basically, this is, this is a surcharge, but it's basically an income tax increase?
Um, yes, I mean, it has, yes, essentially over the, over net income of a certain amount. So it doesn't look like just a marginal rate increase. The, you know, the thresholds are very high, 10 and 25 million, I think, something like that. But essentially what that is, is two new, you know, two new income tax brackets. So right now, the brackets max out at like 450,000 of income a year for a joint filer. This would basically add a new one way out there at 10 million, and then another one way out at 25 million. And we see that as a simpler way to do it, is to kind of define it like that, rather than make a surcharge, which is kind of a new tax type. But essentially, yes, it's a, it's an increase in the income tax for people over that income.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Casio. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I have a question. It might be for Jonathan White as well, but just my concern is in seeing what Maui County is putting forth as far as their Aina Kupuna bill on estates and trusts land that are, have been in generation for eight years or more, they're finding a lot of gentrification issues in raising that property tax. So I don't know if this comes into play here, but I would just want to be cognizant of, of, you know, you know, I understand the idea of wanting to tax wealth and especially property wealth as well at a higher rate, but I just also want to be aware how that may or may not affect some of these lands that have been in generations. And then, and then, of course, they can't pay because, you know, the gentrification in the neighborhoods around them, and yet their land hasn't necessarily altered in terms of building anything or, yeah. So if you can speak to that, if that's relevant in your knowledge base.
Um, I think that maybe this question kind of mixes the previous bill and this bill. This bill's for income tax, an income tax surcharge. So in this case, there would be a net income there that would be like liquid and allow them to be able to pay the surcharge, I would think, anybody that, that reaches that, any individual that reaches that amount. As far as property there, I don't think that's more like the wealth tax would cover that or would try to reach that versus the income tax is typically going to be the income you have coming in that qualifies, so that's going to be liquid.
Right, got it. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, it does make more sense with the past. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. White and Ms. McMillan for being, for being here. Let's go and move on to the next bill, which is SB 3254. This proposes an amendment to the Constitution to specify that reapportionment should be based on the resident population as counted in the most recent dicential, dicential, d annual, I don't know, every 10 years, United States Census. First up on 3254 is Sandy Ma, Common Cause. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We support this proposed constitutional amendment. We believe everyone should be counted and reflected in our redistricting process. And so what we've seen is that for our military members, their household dependents, and for our students, they are not reflected in the state redistricting process. And for residency purposes, they are treated and have a higher standard that they have to meet, which is different from other people in Hawaii, such as, you know, temporary residents. And so this creates an unfair burden to both military, their dependents, and students, and also to Hawaii people. And so for that reason, we do support this proposed constitutional amendment. And we don't see this as a issue of island versus island. We see this as making sure that every person who is here is properly represented. Thank you very much, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Next up is Robin Shun, Deputy Attorney General. Good morning. Can't hear you, sorry. There you go.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes and members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Robin Shun. We have submitted our written comments on this, this bill, and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is Mary Smart.
Not present, Chair.
Who's in support, Shannon Mattson.
Also not present, Chair.
In opposition, Bart Dane. See your, I see your name. Go ahead, Bart.
Okay, my camera doesn't seem to be operated. Oh, there we go. Okay, here I am. I'm not a lawyer, and that will cause me to have undue or unusual humility, I think, as I address you folks, some of whom are attorneys. Some I recognize as very smart attorneys. But I am semi-literate in certain areas of election law, and particularly have been focused on reapportionment issues, not just this cycle, but also 10 years ago, and was deeply immersed. I've read through, in the course of that, I've read through multiple court rulings over the years, as well as the reports and minutes of, of all of the prior commissions, 91, 2001, 2011, and of course, the current one. And I've followed the legislative history as well, so I hope that I can say something of value, or you can tell me where I've gotten it wrong. I was advised by a friend not to worry about words that are in the preamble of the bill, because those are the ones that triggered me. I, I still think it's valuable because preamble sometimes have a way of working themselves into committee reports. And it also gives a sense of the thinking behind the legislation. I'm puzzled by what was considered and what was ignored. The preamble goes so far as to say there's not a rational basis or reasonable basis for the current statute and the Constitution, which I think is a legal mistake to make that, that agreement. U.S. courts have ruled the states are not required to use the total population as reported by the U.S. Census. And the Hawaii basis for extracting military has actually gone to the U.S. Supreme Court long ago with Burns, but they held that it was okay to extract non-resident military for reapportionment. If we do not extract non-resident military, that ends up diluting the political power of voters who reside in areas far from military bases that do not have their populations artificially inflated by the presence of military and would shift four seats to Oahu, frankly, if we didn't, four House seats to Oahu, which I think is unjust. So I think there is a reasonable basis, and I oppose the thrust of this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Next up, we have David Rosenbrock, Project Manager for the Office of Elections with comments, Scott Smart in support, Janet Mason in support, Lamone Khan in opposition, Will Karen in opposition, Patty Cook in opposition, Christopher Dean in opposition, Josh Frost in opposition, Diane Ware in opposition, and Megan Lampson Leatherman in opposition. That's all the testimony we have in SB 3254. Members' questions? So, Mr. Dane, I guess the question, I'm not sure that the, I'm not sure that I agree with Sandy, that it's not going to become a neighbor island versus Oahu bill, but I think the thing that has troubled me about the extractions is that the numbers seem really indefinite. Well, how would you respond to that concern that it's just, we don't really know what we're extracting? We have, we're ending up with precincts that have negative population, which of course is not possible. And how do you, how do you get around that issue?
Okay, there are a bunch of things involved in that. One is, if you know the history of reapportionment, you will understand that the methodologies that have been used historically have never been precise. If you go back to 1991, which is the first one that did on the basis of permanent residents, they commissioned the University of Hawaii Social Science Research Institute, as well as OmniTrack polling service, to actually do interviews and poll and surveys in order to try to come up with approximations of the residency of military personnel and their families. But the technology has gotten much better. The data has gotten much better. Unfortunately, this time around, the initial proposed extraction of 64,000 was clearly based on faulty information, and the commission refused to examine that question for many months. But there was the happy accident of having Commissioner Robin Kennedy, who had worked at Pacific Command and was able to use her connections to get much more reliable numbers, which ended up leading to the larger extraction. Now specifically around.
Put on the census numbers, I mean, okay, there were problems with the census this year because the administration was trying to foul things up, but aren't the census numbers the gold standard? I mean, even though they're not perfectly accurate, isn't that the best we can do?
It's the best we can do for having a base population from which we then proceed to adjust. It is true that they are not perfect, and people mistakenly ascribe hard accuracy to them. And the Bureau of Census has its own methodology for estimating and filling in data when they don't have it, so they do use some approximations and some modeling to come up with the numbers. But I still think that if you believe that the principle, that Hawaii's decision should be controlled by people who are committed to Hawaii's long-term future, meaning the permanent residents of Hawaii, and if you recognize that actually it is not the state of Hawaii who is saying that these non-residents are non-residents, it is the military personnel themselves who have a unique, Sandy Ma said that they're being treated differently. They have a unique ability to legally declare themselves to be residents of other states, and we have very hard data that over 98% of them have declared themselves to be legal residents of other states, states other than Hawaii. So if they are going to make that declaration, why are we not going to take and factor that into our decision?
But if they actually were to declare themselves Hawaii residents?
They would be counted.
They'd be counted. Why would they be counted? Because the military wouldn't extract, I mean, because the military, I guess that's the other, the other issue to me is that the military doesn't, they're not trying to keep data on who they should extract and who they shouldn't. It's just sort of hit and miss.
No, it's actually very hard data. They have the defense manpower.
My point is they're not, they're not collecting the data for that purpose. It's collecting it from someone.
But let's, but let's not misunderstand what they are collecting it for. They collect it because they withhold income taxes depending on, from the payroll of people, depending on where they've declared their legal residence. So they have very hard payroll data as to which is the legal.
For their actual employees.
Excuse me?
For their actual employees.
Yes, for the military personnel themselves. Yes.
Okay, I have a question for, thank you, thank you very much, Bart. Thanks for being here. Ms. Ma, so you made a point about everybody, if you don't, if you don't include everybody, then they end up getting represented anyway, even though they're not included, and it puts undue strain on legislators from those areas. Is that the essence of the point?
Um, thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to clarify, it's Common Cause's position that everyone should be counted, and we don't view this as a island versus island issue, because we want everyone to be counted. I don't know if that's a fine enough distinction for you. And also, our, if we, as a state, for the state redistricting process, do not redistrict and count people with the military personnel and their dependents and students with redistricting in Hawaii, they are not counted in the, in the state that they are listed as their home state or their state of origin. They are not redistricted there.
Oh, because, because the census doesn't count them because they're not, what's the word?
Because the census, the census has listed them here, has counted them here, and we have extracted them out.
Okay, so they're just sort of in limbo.
Yes, you are correct there. And for military dependents, they don't list military dependents. They don't ask military dependents, do you list Hawaii as your home state? It's 100% extracted for military dependents. So if, for example, that is true, I have confirmed that with the reapportionment commission staff.
Misstatement.
Mr. Dane, let, I let, we let you talk. Let, somebody else may have a question for you, but Ms. Ma is talking. Go ahead.
So it is, well, I will clarify then. Per my understanding from discussing with reapportionment commission staff, if, for example, active-duty military dependent is, active-duty military personnel is here in Hawaii, stationed here in Hawaii, marries a person here from Hawaii, that person and that person's, let's say, mom and dad are also dependents, all three are 100% extracted along with that active-duty person, military, even if those three people have never been to the original state that active-duty military had come from and have never left the islands, so.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Senator, I couldn't tell. Was that a hand raising, Senator Casio? Go ahead, go ahead.
But for, I probably have a question for Bart Dane as well, but for Sandy Ma at this point. So, but these non-permanent residents that are now extracted, extracted, it's my understanding that they can vote, because we're doing voting by mail, or many, many states do, that they can still vote in other states, and yet somehow, I mean, I don't understand that they're not being represented because, in our state, because extracting them actually gives more representation to people who are actually voting here. Can you, can you clarify? I just, I'm kind of missing the point in terms of, especially if, if they're non-permanent residents and they can vote in other states, they're being represented in the state that they're choosing to vote in and that they're, they're actually residents in.
But they're, if they're not counted as, so it's the one-person-one-vote principle, Senator Casio, but so I appreciate that question for clarification. And so they are not part of that district for representation for that one-person-one-vote for representation purposes. And so that, that's why it's so important for that one-person-one-vote real, reallocation of people. So you can get your district size and your, and your electoral mapping for that one-person-one-vote.
Yeah. Chair, can I ask another question or?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is for Bart. If you can kind of respond to some of that, because my understanding is, at least for our rural community or outer island communities, which are not heavily populated with non-permanent military, it's my understanding in looking at all the data and following this whole reapportionment conversation, not only for this time, but in learning more about Solomon versus Abercrombie and how that dictated the, the extraction process and the need for extraction, that if, if this, if we don't count the non-permanent resident, is it true in that sense that outer islands would have less representation, less equal representation, that they should be accounted for?
From my understanding, if we don't extract the non-resident population, will the political strength in neighbor islands be diluted? Yes, and the courts have actually recognized that. The U.S. Supreme Court has recognized that. I attach the caustic decision because I think it's a very good overview of the issues involved. There are competing interests between the right of people who are non-residents to be represented in the legislature versus the right of Hawaii residents. versus the right of Hawaii residents to have their vote have equal weight, regardless of where in the state they live. And Caustic lays that out very clearly and leaves it to the wisdom of the legislature to settle that policy question. Do you think that the need for non-resident military who are here for an average of three years to be represented in the legislature is more important than for residents of Hawaii and Maui to have equal representation when they vote for legislators? That's, that's how it's framed in Caustic. And that's, I suggest the wisdom of Solomon might guide you frankly.
Thank you. Bye, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Senator Lee, go ahead.
Thanks very much. I don't want to belabor the, the debate. It's, this is, this is, this is the stuff I live for. But Mr. Dame, thanks for your comments. I think whether, you know, we can get into the legalese of the history and, and everything else, but functionally, I mean, we're talking about some real basic issues that we feel in our communities, whether we're on the neighbor islands or in Oahu, when it comes to the military and presence. Their kids are in our schools. Many of the officers and others live off-base in our communities, which has pros and cons. Providing jobs, driving up rent, there's a lot of things that we grapple with. If we don't acknowledge, I mean, we talk about the voting portion of, I think, representation in our political system generally. But the other side of it too is the votes that we take as elected officials, of course, on behalf of everybody who lives in our community and on those critical issues which are influenced by who's there. If we don't count everybody there, just as a general principle, in those communities where we face those issues, aren't we just pretending like those folks aren't there, but yet we are faced to deal with those issues and vote on them in the legislature and our councils and everywhere else anyway? And isn't that just a detriment? Because whether we like it or not, we have to deal with those issues. And those voices are going to be calling us, whether they're officially counted by our political process or not.
If, if I can respond, I'm not interested in overloading, overburdening legislators who have a lot of military personnel in their, in their district, I understand. But I grew up in Kailua, you know that. At one point, the population base on the base was, was around twenty thousand. It's smaller than that now. If, if a house district was, now is twenty-seven thousand on Oahu, that means it'd only be seven thousand people who actually are permanent residents of Hawaii who are being counted. And those seven thousand would have a vote that is equal to twenty-seven thousand on the big island, who live far from a military base. So you have to compete, you have to balance these competing interests. To what extent do you not represent the military family that comes in and asks for your help? You know, because they're not part of the apportionment versus this right for neighbor islanders to have their votes have equal weight with Oahu residents who do live close to military bases? That's where you should apply the wisdom of Solomon.
Oh, oh, can I, can I follow up, Chair?
Yeah, please.
No, thanks. Well, I appreciate that. Ms. Ma, if I can shift over to you, just on this, on this discussion, you know, I don't disagree entirely with Mr. Dame, I think, but from a practical perspective, I mean, we are, we are elected here by our communities to distribute resources to communities, to distribute supplies for schools and, and all the things that we're elected to do. Are we not, if we are not counting certain portions in certain areas, then just disadvantaging some communities over others? And it's not the easiest way to do this, just to count everybody equally at that point in time, since even if people are somewhat transient over many years, coming and going, their, their population is always going to be here.
Thank you, Senator Lee, that is Common Cause's position. Everyone should be counted as a census state. That is a rule that we have, people should be counted. That is what forty-nine other states do. Other states have large military populations as well. I grew up in Georgia, Georgia has many military bases, California as well. Georgia has other islands off its coast, not well-known, but there are there too, with people living on those islands as well. North Carolina, where I practiced for some time, has outer, outer islands off the coast of North Carolina, California, Alaska. These are all states with islands off the, off their shores and with large military populations that come in and out. And so while I do extremely sympathize with our neighbor islands, the position of the organization of Common Cause is that everyone should be counted. We do not want to place a disproportionate burden on other communities. And like I said, we have a large portion of our community that is snowbirds, temporary populations from other countries even, that are counted as a census state here in Hawaii.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kim, go ahead.
Thank you, for Sandy. So Sandy, wouldn't these, some of these military be counted twice? Because they'd be counted here and if they're registered in another state, they'd have a voice there as well. So wouldn't they be counted twice instead of one vote, one, one-person, one-vote?
Thank you, thank you, Senator Kim, for allowing clarification on that. So for redistricting, it is drawing the lines. For reapportionment and redistricting, it is drawing the electoral lines. It is not determining where you vote, it is drawing the electoral lines.
Yeah, but drawing the lines means your representation. I mean, you, you've made that clear. So whether, whether drawing the lines or the fact that they'll be, they have twice, they're gonna be represented twice.
That's, so it's, it's, it's drawing electoral lines. And if you don't choose to vote here, but you do contribute to your community here, we have a statewide board of elections and there's, so you contribute to your community here, you, a burden, your, your road.
But does that give you two votes? Because you contribute here, but you're registered someplace else. Does it give you double representation rather?
But the electoral lines determine how you, it, it affects the, how the dollars flow into the state in terms of federal tax dollars for roads and schools and hospitals. And so that is important for representation for your district. And so it is, so that's an important matter for redistricting and reapportionment. And so, but voting, they could choose to vote in another, in another state and they could always move out during the ten-year period. So electoral lines are important for drawing the lines for your district. And so it, it, it does differ in terms of representation and how you support your community and get resources and access for your community.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't want to be with this anymore.
Okay, thanks. I did have a follow-up question from Ms. Ma, following up on what Senator Kim said. So it seems like there's two separate questions here. One is, if, if the census counts you in two places, that's a mistake. They're not, they're trying not to do that, they're trying to count you only in one place. So is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're, they're only counted once that way? And they should only be able to vote one place? Now, that's, there's a, an interstate compact that I've been trying to convince the, convince us that we need to join for several years because I think it's quite possible that quite a number of wealthy, well, there's no way to check whether a snowbird can come from California, could come and vote here too. But you're not supposed to vote two places either, correct? You're only supposed to vote one place.
Correct, correct.
All right, I just want to be sure because I will-
We're talking Eric.
Eric, that's the one that I think we should join because I'm, I'm not quite convinced that everybody's only voting in one place. Any case, any other questions on this, on this measure? If not, thank you very much, all of the testifiers, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Casio, go ahead.
Quickly, I just wanted to clarify that, that point that, it's my understanding that the census did not count snowbirds as residents of Hawaii. Like, there's a certain criteria within the, the census that makes that not possible. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that because it was stated and doesn't seem like that would be an appropriate thing for us to consider. Anyway, thank you.
So my understanding is that it's, there's a, I can't remember the phrase that he used, but something like habitual, where, where you, where you habitually stay or something? But it doesn't ask a snowbird question, it just asks whether you're usually there. So if the snowbird is there for nine months of the year or ten months, you know, I don't know where they draw the line, but it's quite possible that you could get a snowbird that would be counted as a habitual resident in the area. But I, I don't believe the census asks a question like that. They just want to know where you're staying that night.
And then, yeah, where you're staying that night. And then it also gets into issues of tax, you know, tax relevancy because you have to be somewhere six months or more.
But that's a separate question, the census doesn't look at that, is my understanding. Okay, if that's it on that one, on thirty-two, thirty-two fifty-four, thank you very much, all of you. And we will move on to SB thirty-one eighty-nine. Thirty-one eighty-nine is, would impose a heightened penalty of a class C felony for persons who repeatedly commit certain gambling offenses and also make the possession of a gambling device a class C felony on the first offense. And would direct all forfeited property or proceeds from sales to units of state or local government that administer mandate operator oversee programs addressing homeless and substance abuse or compulsive gambling. First up on SB thirty-one eighty-nine is Lee Hayakawa for the Office of Public Defenders.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am Assistant Public Defender Lee Hayakawa. The Office of the Public Defender opposes in part and supports in part SB thirty-one eighty-nine. The OPD opposes the proposed amendment seeking to turn misdemeanors, namely gambling, possession of gambling records and possession of gambling devices into a class C felony when committed more than once in a ten-year window. Now, HRS seven twelve, twelve twenty-one, promoting gambling in the first degree is a class C felony. And it target, targets those individuals that advance or profit from gambling activity. This measure would in fact punish the simple gambler with the same punishment for individuals who run, own, or manage, manage the gambling houses, game rooms, and six-five betting sheets. The proposed amendment also appears to target individuals with gambling problems. Compulsive gambling or gambling disorder, disorder has been formally recognized by the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, otherwise known as DSM-FIVE, as a behavior addiction. This proposed amendment would target these individuals, criminalizing those with mental health disorders and turning those with these disorders into felons for life. I am available for questions and thank the committee for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for being here today. Next, we have Major Philip Johnson, Narcotics Vice Division of Honolulu Police Department.
Yes, good morning, Chair and Committee. Submitted written testimony and I'll stand on that, available for questions.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Tricia Nakamoto, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney for Honolulu County. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamoto, appearing behalf of the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office. We are in opposition to this bill. While we do agree with the intent that, we, we absolutely agree that illegal gambling and the so-called gambling houses are a very serious problem in Hawaii and especially on Oahu. So we appreciate the intent of wanting to hold people associated with those enterprises accountable. However, the particular offenses that are listed in this bill are not ones that we typically charge. And as you'll see in our testimony, even the ones that we do charge, these are the cashiers, the security guards, as the Public Defender's Office was mentioning. They're actually people that have very little criminal record, from what we're seeing, if any, and they almost never have any prior convictions for gambling-related offenses. I'm not sure if that's done by design or coincidence, but that's, that's what we see. We are strongly opposed to Section Four, which is the part that would redirect any of the forfeiture proceeds that have to do with gambling cases. On Oahu, at least, about eighty-five percent of all the forfeiture cases that we do are gambling cases. So a sense that would eliminate pretty much any funding that our department receives in order to maintain the program. It's, it's just wouldn't be sustainable, I suppose, at that rate. We're available for questions, if any, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Next is Kathy Gogol in support, Johnny Mae L. Perry also in support. That's all the testimony we have in SB thirty-one eighty-nine. Members, any questions? Senator Kim, go ahead.
Okay, I guess for our police department, Major?
Yes, ma'am.
Johnson, so after the second, second offense, within ten years, it becomes a class C felony, correct? Did I read the bill correctly?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yes, I'm looking at the bill.
Okay, so in, in a vehicle break-in or certain, certain assaults, they're not felonies, right? Depending on what the, what the amount might be, is that correct?
Yeah, depends, yes.
I'm just trying to compare some of these more-
I'm sorry?
I'm just trying to compare some of these more, I don't know the word violent, but more, you know, crimes that is going on that you read about where the guy has a hundred convictions or a hundred arrests and he's let go on the street and they're misdemeanors or petty misdemeanors continually, where, you know, on this situation, you have some of the concerns that was raised by the prosecutor, people who are, could be involved, but yet not really involved in, in, in the actual crime itself, being charged with felonies.
Generally, when we, when we serve a warrant on a gambling house, an illegal gambling house, and we do it frequently, several times a week, usually the individual that gets arrested is, for lack of better words, the guy holding the bag. So they have a cashier assigned, they're the lowest level of the establishment. They're the ones who give out the money, pay off the winnings when, when somebody wins, cashes them out. They're the ones that we can prove at the time are, are gambling. So the prosecutor's testimony is correct that it, it does, in effect, it does affect the more lower-level individuals in the establishment. It takes very lengthy investigation and resources to identify the property owner, if they're involved, or the establishment owner, you know, if they're a renter or just somehow profiting off of it. We do have investigations that are successful in that route, but the numbers that I put in my testimony, we wouldn't be able to do near that if it's raised, if it's raised to a felony. It would just increase the amount of resources and investigative hours we'll have to put into it to get to the point of what this bill is intending to do.
But you're supporting this bill?
I, it's difficult for us to oppose it because this is probably our biggest complaint generator right now in just about every community on Oahu, especially on the, the Eva side, Wainai side, Kalihie and in town.
Understand.
Yeah, we-
I have complaints in my district and I'm not opposed to get them, but you just said yourself, it may, would make it even harder, so.
And then in addition to that, we're seeing a lot of peripheral crimes that, that are coming about with these establishments, robberies. We've had a number-
But shouldn't those peripheral crimes be, that are more violent in nature or, you know, are still stuff, I mean, there's still misdemeanors. Whereas this one would then be elevated with once in-
No, the robbery-
Twice in ten years.
We were seeing some felony crimes committed in them and it's not necessarily related to the establishment.
Yeah, but you're missing my point. My point is, we hear about crowding of the, of our prisons, we hear about all this stuff, and yet the, the crimes that I think a lot of people are getting hurt and, and, and-
Are lower offenses, you're saying?
Are still misdemeanors and these people are out on the streets over, even though when you catch them, they're let go over and over. And yet you have a situation here where we want to let the, the classy felonies for the level, people who are not really committing these kinds of more type crimes against a person. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other questions, Senator Casio, go ahead.
I have a question for Major Johnson, thank you for being here to answer questions. How do you folks differentiate between types and degree of gambling? For example, the difference between casual sports betting, between friends versus like syndicated high-stakes gaming? I'm just thinking without- I'm just thinking without such a differentiation, there might be a wide net cast that may have that differential outcomes based on income, ethnicity, and other known disparities within the justice system. So how do you folks differentiate between those?
The, I think the different, the difference is a simple bet between two people is one thing, but when somebody hosts a game and they're profiting off others gambling, that's when it raises it to the level of gambling enforcement. So I don't think that this bill would target those simple what you just described. And we don't target that for enforcement either. It's the ones profiting off of gambling.
Good. Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, I have one for Ms. Nakamoto. I think your, let's see, I'll wait for you to come on up. I think your testimony indicated that the problem that the prosecutors are having, the most difficult problem you're having with prosecuting gambling houses is the owner of the house themselves, that the usual paradigm is that, or the usual pattern is that the house is rented to somebody and the renters are the ones who run the gambling.
Correct, but even the renters are very rarely, if ever, prosecutable because of the state of mind, its knowledge. And we can't prove that they know if they're never there, if they have no connections, no, there's no paper trail, there's no statements. In the rare instance, I believe that we do have things like that. Often, the feds take the case.
I see. Do, so what? I mean, obviously, for crimes, you have to have some sort of mens, well, most crimes, you have to have some kind of mens rea. What do you think would be useful in terms of the housing or the houses, the leases in the houses to make prosecutions more effective?
It's hard to say, and at the same time, understanding Senator Mercado Kim's earlier statement that we don't want to overcrow the jails, we don't want to make felonies out of low level people. One of the bills that we noticed this year on the House side is HB two one nine seven. That would actually increase the penalties for promoting gambling. I think one step up, so that second degree would be C felony. First degree would be a B felony. And then it would also lower the state of mind. There's no guarantee that it would work, and actually, it's debatable whether we could even get those, the renters or the much less the property owners at the lower state of mind. It hasn't been tried yet, so it might be worth a try.
But in terms of the, in terms of the constitutionality of lowering the state of mind for a tenant or a landlord, or is that constitutional, as far as you know? I'm looking, I'm just wondering if there's some additional language that we could add to this bill that would target what seems to be the crux of the problem for you guys at this point?
Lowering the state of mind would certainly help, but it's not these particular charges. It's as we had mentioned, it would be the two charges we typically use are promoting gambling in the second degree, which is HRS seven twelve dash twelve twenty two and promoting gambling in the first degree. I can't remember if that's twelve twenty one, perhaps. But those are the ones that could potentially, if, could potentially be used to get the higher.
Is the public defender still here? Sorry, I'm trying to through the names.
And oh, I'm sorry, I should mention also that part of that thinking is not necessarily making felons out of the low level folks, but basically making it harder to recruit people to serve in those positions.
Right.
Making it less easy for them to find people.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mr. Hayakawa, in terms of the lowering the mens rea for the tenants and landlords who own the gambling houses, what's your, I kind of have a feeling that you'll be opposed to it, but I'm just curious what your thought is on the constitutionality of it.
Well, thank you for the question, Senator. You know, I, I feel like we would be opposed to it. The constitutionality, I still trying to flesh out in my mind. I don't have a good answer for you at the moment.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks very much. Thank you. Anyone, any other questions? If not, let's take a short recess. It's, my clock says ten twenty four, so let's come back at ten twenty seven. So we're in recess for three minutes till ten twenty seven. Okay, back out of recess for this Judiciary Committee hearing this Friday morning. We just finished up with SB thirty one eighty nine having to do with gambling. Let's go ahead and move on to SB thirty two fifteen. SB thirty two fifteen is relating to garnishment. Authorizes cost of living expenses as determined by the self-sufficiency standard for the state to be protected from certain garnishments. First up on thirty two fifteen is Marvin S. Dang for Hawaii Financial Services Association. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Marvin Dang for the Hawaii Financial Services Association. We oppose this particular bill for two reasons. One with regard to the fact that it may not necessarily be sound policy, and this bill could actually in fact hurt consumers. I want to point out that garnishments for financial institutions is always a last resort. Financial institutions always try to resolve matters short of lawsuits, short of judgments, and short of garnishments. As I've seen said, if one reads the preamble of the bill on page one, lines twelve to fourteen, it is accurate that the federal law exempts seventy-five percent of net wages from garnishment. But if you read page two, lines five through eleven, it's not totally clear, but the fact is, if you do some reverse calculations, Hawaii law exempts eighty percent, eighty percent of disposable wages, and that's after tax and other withholding. So the Hawaii law right now is actually more favorable than the federal law to consumers. What this bill would do is using calculations of the self-sufficiency standard issued by D-bet. If someone has net of thirty seven thousand six forty six dollars per year from their employer, all of that, one hundred percent would be exempt from garnishments from the current law.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, you can hang around, the members may have questions. Next is Anne Frederick, Executive Director for Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action and Support. Gary Hoosier, Executive Director for Puna Hawaiian Initiative and Support. Kevin Shienoki for Guardian Capital Management Hawaii in Opposition. Richard McClellan with comments, Nanea Lo in Support. Michael Akana in Opposition. Genevieve Freeman, President, Medical Collection Agency of Hawaii Incorporated in Opposition. Reverend Samuel Domingo in Support. Stephanie Y. Sakamoto for Hawaii Credit Union League with comments. That's all the testimony we have on SB thirty two fifteen. Members, any questions? Senator Casio.
I have a question for Mr. Dang. Thank you for being here as well. I just wanted to be clear, if I understand this correctly, in that, you know, wages that remain after cost of living adjustments and are still available for garnishment, and that this will not affect high income debtors, but but it will have a tremendous effect on lower income debtors. And so I guess my question to you is if creditors deserve, if it's your position that creditors deserve their money before a person can feed themselves and their families?
My position is that it's really a balancing situation. If a person has borrowed money or has utilized credit cards and incurred debts, it comes down to how much can be resolved, how much as a matter of policy, the legislature states can be recovered from garnishments. As I indicated, eighty percent is already exempt, which is higher than the federal seventy-five percent. This would exempt one hundred percent. And as indicated in the, in the testimony that I had, the Federal Reserve Bank of New York has indicated that by tightening up and restricting access to credit, that affects not only the borrowers with low credit scores, but also it's felt across the credit spectrum. So the others who might seek to get loans could find themselves negatively impacted because lenders will conceivably tighten up credit. So it is a balancing situation. It's not like, it's not a clear black and white situation, Senator.
Can't hear you.
Oh, no, thank you. Again, looking at the pandemic, right? We have just gone through two years of situations where many folks were living off of their credit and in order to feed themselves and house themselves. And so again, this, this bill is designed so that, again, you know, higher income debtors are not necessarily gonna immediately be in a position to be unhoused. And yet, putting in some of these, you know, these nuanced, this nuanced language means that we actually can prevent homelessness as a result of of, you know, being in debt. So I guess, thank you for sharing that. If you have anything else to add, that's fine, but at this point, I think, no, thank you, Chair.
Nothing else for me.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, oh, I do have one question for Mr. Dang. Do you happen to know, in, let's see, what section is it? Six fifty one, six fifty one, one? When was the last time those, the charts were updated? So it's, I want to say ninety percent of the first hundred dollars after the, it is a formula, but then there's like a ninety percent of the first hundred, eighty, eighty percent of the next hundred, and then
Ninety-five percent of the first hundred is exempt, and then ninety percent, and then eighty percent of anything over two hundred dollars a month. But in answer to your question, Senator, I do not know.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions on SB thirty two fifteen? If not, thank you, Mr. Dang, for being here. We'll move on to SB thirty two oh seven. This establishes a three-year women's court pilot program within the judiciary's first circuit, which is Oahu, for those who aren't aware. And I think that's pretty much the description. First up is Chief Judge Browning. I think that's on here, yep, morning.
Morning. Thank you for allowing me to testify. Thank you, Members of the Committee, and the Chair and Vice Chair. One of the, I'd like to just to talk about a couple of points that is not in my testimony. Since nineteen eighty, the number of women who've entered into prison has increased by seven hundred percent. In contrast to men, that statistic is fifty percent. We know from all the data that most of the women offenders who end up in prison end up in prison for nonviolent offenses. What is important to understand in terms of why this women's court would be important is understanding the pathways into the criminal justice system for women. Like men or like other offenders, there's of course issues with respect to substance abuse, with respect to mental health issues and other factors. But what is distinct with respect to women, in contrast to men, is many of the reasons that women enter juvenile justice, or rather, into the justice system have to do with issues related to trauma. The vast majority of women offenders have experienced some sort of trauma, whether it be sex abuse or whether it be physical abuse. The problem with the criminal justice system as it stands now, and one of the reasons what this, the idea of this court would address is that most of the modalities that are used to provide for rehabilitation or provide for services is based upon non-gender specific type of approaches. What the women's court would do is provide gender.
I'm sorry, Judge, I'm always reluctant to cut off judges, but we do have a two-minute time limit. I think there will probably be questions for you if you can, if you can hang around for a few more minutes.
I can, and I'm happy to.
Right, thank you. Next up is Linda Rich, Women's Prison Project.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I, the Women's Prison Project totally agrees with everything that Judge Browning just said. And I'd like to point out a few other things that are in our written testimony. One is that the state of Hawaii, for the state of Hawaii, women are a larger proportion of our incarcerated population than in any other state in the nation. And as Judge Browning said, most of those women are in for nonviolent, primarily drug-related offenses, which can better be addressed through rehabilitation programs. There is a lot of evidence across the country of courts that have been established to supervise women in community settings and to allow them to continue to be with their families in the community. One of those courts, which I mentioned in my testimony, showed that in Los Angeles County for women coming out of prison directly, they had a forty-nine percent recidivism rate. For the women who went through the women's court there, they had an eighteen percent recidivism rate. So we would not only reduce incarceration of women, we would reduce recidivism. The other thing is that we would protect the children of these women from the well-documented detrimental effects that incarceration of their mother causes. And seventy-five percent of the women in our prison system are mothers. Sixty percent were custodian parent, custodian parents to their children before incarceration. So I urge you to pass this measure. Thank you. And I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next is Craig Harai, Director of Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Next is the Director of Department of Human Services, also in support, I mean, in support. Shannon Sheldon, President of Hawaii State Bar Association in support. Anne Freed in support, and Dar Carlin in support. That's all the testimony we have on SB thirty two oh seven. Members, questions? Senator Kim, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge Browning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good question. I'm certainly glad that the judiciary supports this. Can you post these courts without, well?
No, we need a specialized unit that is based upon trauma-informed care. We know this from our experience with, say, Girls Court, which has been very successful in Family Court and been able to address a number of the issues that are, are, that female.
Understand, but can, can, you folks have created these specialty courts without, without legislation, right?
I think that the understanding is, and the purpose of this bill is asking for appropriations.
Right.
Be able to do so, so the, the.
But you can establish, the judiciary can establish a specialty court without.
Establish it, but we're not, we're not without the approach appropriate.
Understand. My question was, you can establish it. So if you do establish it, then come in and ask for money. No way of doing it versus waiting for a bill to get passed and then trying to get, get the appropriation. So I'm just trying to see how we can say we need this court and we know we're gonna establish it and we need to get the, we need to get the resources.
That's correct. So when I, when I came up with this idea of establishing this court, Senator, one of the things I did is looked at the resources we had within the judiciary in terms of the number of cases. we had within the judiciary in terms of the number of cases, the number of probation officers, and the individual folks that we would need to specialists that you would need in terms of mental health and trauma that we would need to be able to go forward with this court. Because the last thing.
I understand, Judge, I understand. I'm just saying that you we can do this if you folks say we're going to establish a court. So I just hope that we can get that and then get the monies appropriated and not have to a bill to get passed.
Thank you. Appreciate.
Other questions? I do have one for Judge Browning. So it's sort of along the same lines as Senator Kim's question. So the the bill seems to ask only for funding for the support personnel, not the judge and him or herself. So you're not you're not asking for another First Circuit judge, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have the judge that I, you know, and before we came to you and before this bill was proposed, Senator, you know, I'd looked at the number of looked at the judges that we have who would be perfect for this particular court. And Judge Trish Morikawa is the individual who I would assign as chief judge if we were able to pass this.
Okay, so that that answers my next question. Was was not even an empty judge position. It's an actual body, an actual person already have in mind. Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
And then I sort of cut you off mid-sentence. If you can remember what what the that final point you wanted to make was, please, please go ahead. But if if it's water under the bridge at this point, that's fine, too.
I think that Ms. Rich made the points that I was going to make much better than I would.
Great, thank you. Okay, members, any other questions? If not, thank you for all for being here, testifiers, and we'll go ahead and move on to the, it's the last bill on the agenda. SB twenty-six forty-one appropriates monies for residential programs that allow minor children to remain with their mothers to reduce the risk of trauma and multigenerational incarceration, including communities, community-based parole programs, residential drug treatment programs, therapeutic community programs, and mental health programs. First up on twenty-six forty-one is Moni Zuka, probation administrator for the judiciary. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. And I'm going to stand on the written testimony. And I'm available. I also have with me the Neighbor Island probation administrators that would also be available for questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Rich for Women's Prison Project.
Thank you. Well, as we've just been discussing about the women's court, if we're moving more women into community-based rehabilitation programs, and we know that the the reality is that the majority of them are women and that many of them are custodial parents of their children when they're not in prison, then it really means that we need to provide for those children and that young children especially are best provided for by being with their mothers. And we also have research that shows that women's retention rates in rehabilitation and prison programs are higher when their children are with them. So the Women's Prison Project strongly supports this measure to ensure that those that there are programs in the community that are funded adequately to allow children to remain with their mothers while they are in treatment or rehabilitation. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Next is Darlan Chin Skol for Hawaii Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Action Group.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Senator Carl Rhodes, and all the members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to testify in behalf of this population. I am actually working directly in a residential program with mothers and infants. And it is really important for us to fund this program only because this is this is multi-generational in our community. I do not even understand how I'm I'm a little emotional about this only because I am a voice for children and I have been advocating for families and children of Hawaii. And trauma-informed care is very important for these women because they do not even understand why they are in the situation they're in. In my experience, working from them, they do not even understand appropriate mothering. What is mothering when they did not even experience mothering? And their parents did not experience mothering. And the substance abuse is multi-generational. And I think having them in this residential treatment program, we are addressing parenting. We are addressing all those trauma they are experiencing. We are addressing the feelings that they don't even know how to name them. And I I am I'm appealing to you. I'm appealing for you for this population because we are we are here to break the cycle, the cycle of multigenerational trauma, the cycle of substance abuse, the cycle of not understanding their existence, their purpose, and how to move and and perform in in our society productively. And then if we do not address these children, we'll be incarcerated like their mothers. And I see this. I see three, four, five generations in our care. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I'm looking forward to passing this bill out of your committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Director Hara for Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Kathy Betts, Director of Department of Human Services in support. Heather Lust, Executive Director for Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. Alan Johnson, Chair for Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Dar Carlin in support. Amanda Looney in support. And Candace Pang in support. That's all the testimony we have on SB twenty-six forty-one. Members' questions? I do have a question. Oh, Senator Gabbard, do you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
What's the criteria for a woman to be eligible for the residential program?
The criteria, actually, the criteria, we we have a lot of cases. Can I answer? I'm so sorry. I just jumped in. In the residential program where we're in, we we address all kinds of women. Most of them are homeless. And and there's really no criteria for us to take them in. And we have, like, court-mandated cases as well. So we're working in all levels of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other other questions, members? I did have a question for Mommy Zuka. Still here? Yeah. The bill as it stands now doesn't have a dollar amount. Do you know what the dollar amount is?
I don't have a dollar amount.
Okay.
I can't get back to you.
Well, hopefully, we'll pass it out today. So I don't, you know, I need it now. I'm gonna have it for today. Okay, no problem. Members, other questions? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Members, anything that you want to go into a breakout room to discuss? Are you ready to go? Looks like ready to go. Okay, let's go ahead and go to decision-making then. First up is SB SB thirty-one eighty-two. This establishes a wealth asset tax of one percent of all on all assets of a taxpayer except for interest in real property in excess of twenty million for taxpayers filing joint returns or ten million for every other taxpayer. I would like to try to move something forward, at least to the next round. I I think the sort of the conventional wisdom is that having wealthy people come and visit us in Hawaii is an unanmitigated good for the state. And I think that's not true. It's sort of a mixed bag. There's they do spend money, and then they also drive up our our housing prices. So it's hard to know exactly where to come down on this. But here's my suggestion. So let's make some amendments. Any person with it with any person. So this is per the D.O. taxes recommendation to split it up by per individual as opposed to filing jointly or anything like that. Any person with a net worth of twenty million dollars of assets in Hawaii, just in Hawaii, not worldwide, would be subject to the tax. So they can file separately from the spouse or from anyone else. And the tax would be one percent of the assets held in Hawaii. And the net worth in Hawaii would include real estate, which is considering the question I asked, D.O. taxes, I realize there's some questions there. That that will be the reason for the the bad date at the end of the recommendation. For the banker's testimony, we'll clarify that its debts owed to the taxpayer that would count as assets with debts owed by the taxpayer to someone else are liabilities. Add a provision that is paying a wealth tax on the same asset in a different state, then the amount paid to the other state will be subtracted from the tax liability of the person taxing of paying this tax, which shouldn't come up if the if it's just if we're just looking at wealth held here in Hawaii, but it might. And then I'll put a bad date on it, July thirty, twenty seventy-five. And that would be it. So I'd like to move it goes to it goes to Wham! next. This is, you know, a lot of these questions are squarely in there, Kulianna. I don't know the answer on the constitutional question about real property. But if Chair Dela Cruz were to hear that bill, I think they would get the testimony from AG and others who would give us a clearer answer about what we can and can't do. So that's the recommendation. Questions or concerns?
Was it any person? How much? Ten, twenty million?
Twenty million per person.
Thank you.
So obviously, it's not going to affect a ton of people. Ton of money, but not a ton of people. Okay, if not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB thirty-two fifty-one. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Ocasio.
Reservations.
Senator Gabbard.
Aye.
Senator Kim.
Reservations.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We'll move on to SB thirty-two fifty. This establishes an income tax surcharge on high-income individuals, estates, and trusts, and also establishes a working group within the Department of Taxation to develop a proposal for state wealth tax. Recommendation here is to make some amendments. Per D.O. taxes recommendation, structure that will structure this as two additional marginal rates for those with extremely high incomes, ten million and twenty-five million for those filing jointly and lower amounts for different filing statuses. And with the two two marginal rates, we'll remove the new tax penalty language and utilize the penalties and interest that rules that already apply to income tax in general. Also, per the per D.O. taxes, the Wealth Tax Working Group will remove the Tax Review Commission Chair as there won't be one by the time this bill passes, if it does. And I'll put a defective date on it, July thirty, twenty seventy-five. Questions, concerns? Senator Kim?
So you're just doing the two marginal rates? You're not adjusting any of the other rates?
No, so there'd be the big jump between like four hundred and fifty thousand all the way up to ten million.
Right, so you're not touching anything that long. You're just.
No, no, just adding on two really high.
Thank you for that clarification.
Questions or concerns? Any other questions or concerns? If not, for the vote, Vice Chair.
Members, SB thirty-two fifty, the recommendation is to pass with amendments of the members present. Are there any noes or reservations? Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation.
Thank you. Next up is SB thirty-two fifty-four. This proposes an amendment to Article Four, Sections Four and Six of the Hawaii State Constitution regarding reportionment. There are some difficult issues here, but I think the request, the recommendations, to pass it as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Lee.
Oh, thanks. I just wanted to comment and ask for your indulgence. I'm actually with Deal and Art, a site visit multitasking right now. But for this one, I just appreciate the comments from the community and, you know, Mr. Dame and others who had weighed in. I just want to point out that for for my purposes, you know, our communities that do have a lot of military families in them, whether we legally count them or not or whatnot, they're in our communities. Their kids go to our schools. And in those cases, you know, if we don't, I think, ask this question about proper representation, food, some of the family, when we equally divide our resources amongst all our schools, our schools are going to lose out. And that hurts our local kids in our schools because our local send their kids to those exact same schools. And when it comes to resources, when it comes to roads and other things, we don't want our communities to lose out because the people are really there, whether we legally recognize that or not. And those divisions of resources are a real thing that we have to deal with, whether we count those folks or not because they're there. So I just wanted to say appreciate the comments. And at the end of the day, I mean, this just puts it out for a vote so that our communities can weigh in and give them the opportunity. So I just appreciate the your indulgence, Chair.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Senator Casio, followed by Senator Kim.
Oh, Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. In for the nature of our outer islands, especially, I'm going to speak up in opposition to this. And and to note my colleagues' concern, federal impact aid is already shorted in our schools when it comes to military population. So that's a whole other conversation. However, I just think it's an important point to bring up. I would like to say that I I feel very strongly in my opposition to this bill. And our Hawaii County Committee of Democrats has passed a strong resolution recently, also urging the State Reaportment Commission to do a proper extraction of non-permanent military members. Almost everyone who lives in Hawaii outside of Oahu already feels disenfranchised. Many people feel disenfranchised due to the seat of government and affairs that occur on Oahu as is. Our voices are significantly already significantly diluted. We have to travel to Oahu for most, you know. Now, fortunately, we have Zoom, but oftentimes for most complex or specialty medical procedures or other things, there's already this lack of service, infrastructure, and basic funding needs that gets prioritized for Oahu first. So I really just think it's important to speak up and continue to do the non-permanent extraction and so that outer islands have a fair voice and and that this does not take away from our power in getting our voices heard and the representation that we deserve for our permanent residents. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you, Senator Kim.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, this is a reportionment. Not one on resources. This is not one on the census. And so the resources is a separate thing. So I have military in my district. And so I noticed that the areas with the military, that the voter turnout at the end of the day is very small. Like you said, if if we've got, I've got ten thousand, they count ten thousand, and three thousand of them are military, then went up to seven thousand. But what it boils down to is that the people being elected in that district are being elected by a very small amount because they're non-residents that don't vote and but being counted in the lines. So while the district, my district seems to be very area-wise, because of the military, my voter, my voter base is very small at the end of the day. So for those reasons, I will be voting in opposition as well.
Okay, thank you. I I would note that at least in my old House district, that my voter base was very small, but for a different sort of non-resident reason, which was a lot of the immigrants weren't eligible to vote yet.
Right.
So I I don't know, you know, I'm not sure how that cuts. But anyway, there are other reasons not to vote. Any other comments? If not, Senator Kulkulay.
SB thirty-two fifty-four, passing unamended. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Ocasio. Senator Gabbard.
A reservation.
Senator Kim.
Oh.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Favela is excused. Chair recommendation adopted.
Good, thank you. Moving on to SB thirty-one eighty-nine. This is relating to gambling. Imposes a heightened penalty for certain gambling offenses. On this one, I would like to move something forward, but I would also like to try to come up with some language that more specifically addresses the what appears to be the primary concern of the prosecutor. So I'm going to defer this until Thursday, February twenty. Wait a minute, that doesn't sound right. February twenty-six, that's too far. That's like after the lateral.
You could do February tenth or February seventeen.
Why don't we do the tenth? What day is that?
February tenth is a Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, February ten at nine twenty-six. And we'll try to come up with some suitable language. Otherwise, we'll all be making a recommendation to move something along. Okay, SB thirty-two fifteen relating to garnishment. Recommendation here is probably just going to make everybody mad, but I'm going to put it out there anyway, and we'll see what. Recommendation here is probably just going to make everybody mad, but I'm going to put it out there anyway, and we'll see what happens. I'm going to, I'm recommending that we remove the cost-of-living exemption language. However, I'd like to substantially increase the amounts exempt from garnishment. It doesn't appear that these amounts have been adjusted since at least 1997. It's all, it's far enough back that I'd have to dig around in the archives to figure out when the charts were changed, and haven't had a chance to do that. So the recommendation is to delete the living exemption language, but increase 5% of the first $100 per month to 5% of the first $200 a month. So it's a bigger amount of money with a smaller amount that you can take out. And then increase the 10% of the next $100 per month to 10% of the next $200. So it's a bigger amount that a smaller amount is taken out of. And then increase the 20% of anything above $200 per month to 20% of anything above $400 a month. So if you want to look at it that way, it's a, it's an inflation adjustment that more or less mirrors what the inflation has been over the last 25 years or so. Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's it. Any questions or concerns? Okay, Senator Kauli for the vote.
Members, SB 3215, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Knowing six members present, are there any noes or reservations?
Reservations.
So noted for Senator Kim. Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to SB 3207. Next, yes. This establishes a three-year women's court pilot program within the judiciary's First Circuit. Recommendation here is to go ahead and pass it as is and see whether, whether we've got money to do that or not. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Members voting on SB 3207, the recommendation is to pass this measure unamended. Members, are there any noes or reservations? Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next up is SB 2641. This appropriates money for residential programs that allow minor children to remain with their mothers to reduce the risk of trauma and multiple, multi-generational incarceration. Okay, since the hearing ended, they did give us a number. So I'd like to add some additional language in the preamble on the benefits of keeping children and mothers together, and then we'll include the dollar amount, which is $200,000. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
I'm, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Ocasio.
Really quickly, I just wanted to mahalo you. This is actually a women's legislative caucus plus package bill, and I just wanted to mahalo them and, and you for putting this.
No problem. Thank you. Any other concerns or questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 2641, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any noes or reservations? Senator Favela is excused. Recommendation adopted.
Great. I believe that concludes our business. Thank you much, thank you very much for being here. We're adjourned.